I would like to start our October 13th, 2020 Paramount Planning Commission. It was 5:59 at 6:00 PM now. Can we stand for Pledge of Allegiance? Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we have roll call, John?
Yes, I have a statement I'd like to read. Pursuant to Executive Order N-2920 executed by the Governor of California on March 17th, 2020, and as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the regular meeting of the Planning Commission scheduled for Tuesday, October 13th, 2020 at 6:00 PM will allow members of the public to participate and address the commission during the open session of the meeting via teleconference only. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Can we get a roll call of the members, please?
Commissioner Bautista?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Here.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Here.
And we get approval of the minutes for September 8th, 2020?
A motion to approve?
You have a first? I have a second.
Commissioner Bautista, second.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza? Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Any public comments?
No public comments, sir.
We move to the new business, conditional use permit number 892, a request by HGG Corp. to operate as a warehouse distribution business with storage, packing, shipping services at the 14524 Garfield Avenue in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone.
Yes, Commission Chair Abrego, this applicant has decided to lease another location within the same business park, and given that, we need to ask that you remove the item from the agenda.
Okay. Can I get a motion to remove the conditional use permit number 892 from the Planning Commission calendar?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Commissioner Bautista, second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Next item is conditional use permit number 893, a request by Trekline Motorsports to operate a warehouse for an auto parts e-commerce business specializing in lifting and lowering and leveling kits for trucks and SUVs at the 14526 Garfield Avenue in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, I'll go through a brief presentation for you. As you mentioned, this is a request to operate a warehouse for an auto parts e-commerce business at 14562 Garfield Avenue in the Heavy Manufacturing Zone. The applicant would be leasing an 8,561 square foot suite within an existing 71,119 square foot multi-tenant building. Here's a look at the property on the top, and this is looking in a southeasterly direction. And on the bottom right, you can see the suite that the applicant proposes to lease. Here's an overview and aerial. Garfield is on the left, running north and south. Rose Grands is on the top, running east and west. The industrial park is highlighted in blue, and the building that the applicant would be located in is outlined in black, and then the suite is in the circle. And here's a look at a site plan of the property. Garfield again is at the left, and it's running north and south, and the suite that the applicant would lease is highlighted in blue. So this would be a warehouse for lifting, lowering, and leveling kits for trucks and SUVs. The business would operate 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday to Friday. They would have four employees. Shipings would consist of one commercial truck delivery per week, and shipments up to three times per week, and that would be via commercial vehicles. Shipments twice per day via FedEx, and then shipments once per day via the U.S. Postal Service. And we're recommending approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our fellow commissioners?
No questions.
Ernie?
No.
No questions. George, you're good?
Gordon?
No, no questions.
All right, this is an open hearing, so do we have anyone that's in favor or opposed?
No, but if we're, nobody in favor or opposed.
Okay. Can I get a motion to close this public hearing, or the public hearing?
I move to close the hearing.
Can I get a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Ernie. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Our next item is to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20034, approving requests by Trekline to Motorsports to operate a warehouse for an auto parts e-commerce business and specializing in the lifting and lowering and leveling kits for trucks and SUVs at the 14526 Garfield Avenue on the M2 Zone. Can I get a motion to adopt the Planning Commission?
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you, George. Second.
Commissioner Bautista, I'll second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Next item is oral reports.
Yes, Commissioner Chair Abrego and commissioners, there were four items that were on the City Council agenda last week that are of interest to the Planning Commission. The first one was adopting citywide regulations for mobile food and ice cream vending machines, and essentially, we're required to allow these types of commercial trucks on public streets, and we've put some regulations into place that were approved by the council, and also some regulations for on private property also. So these are more geared toward those kind of gourmet food trucks that you might see that are popular, so that's kind of what this is aimed at. The second item was an ordinance to change the zone on a Landra. That's from Home Depot over to Huntsaker, and that was a cleanup. You might recall that you approved a 10-unit single-family housing development several months ago. This was just a cleanup to make that consistent, so it was changed from industrial to multiple-family residential, and you had recommended approval the previous month, and the council did approve that also. A third item was related to monument signs for gas stations, digital monument signs, and then for the digital signs that you see in commercial and in windows usually, mostly in commercial and office buildings. We're fine-tuning that a little bit, and we'll be taking it back to them. That was something you had recommended approval of. The only change that they're might be looking to do would be related to the digital signs in windows, making that a little bit more clear. So that's one change that we'll be making. And then finally, the fourth item, this isn't something that you saw, but we're going to hire two contractors to help us out with some planning services. One of them will help us out with the administrative actions for the metal-related businesses. Those applications were part of the zoning amendments that were done almost two years ago, and so we're hiring a contract planner to assist us in completing those applications as quickly as we can. And then the second contractor that we'd like to hire is somebody that will help us out with some downtown projects, some projects in the city's downtown that will be upcoming to help us decide or to figure out what the best uses would be in a couple of downtown projects. And that's it, Commissioner. Commission Chair Abrego?
Thank you, John.
Yes.
I have a question regarding the ice cream trucks.
Yes.
The first item, you say there are allowed now?
Actually, they always were allowed. We just didn't have any regulations.
Oh, they were?
Right. We didn't have, by state law, they are permitted. They have to be permitted. We just didn't have any regulations. So now we have regulations about only being on residential streets, basically.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. Any comments from our city attorney, John?
No, sir.
Any comments from our commissioners?
No.
No comments. Ernie?
Pardon?
Nope.
Staff? Comments from our staff?
No comments.
Okay, our meeting is adjourned. Our planning meeting is, next meeting is scheduled for November 10th, 2020 at 6:00 PM.
The Paramount Development Review Board is called to order. Roll call members, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Here.
Board Member Bautista?
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Present.
Board Chair Sparza?
Here.
What is the minutes, the approval of minutes of September 8th? Michael, I'm sorry. Approval of minutes of September 8th?
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. Jaime, Abrego.
Board Member Abrego?
Yes.
Board Member Bautista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza?
Any public comments?
No public comments.
New business reports? New business or reports?
No, no, no new business.
Board comments? Any comments from board members?
No.
No.
Staff?
No.
Okay, the Paramount Development Review Board is adjourned till November 10th, 2020 at 6:00 PM.
Speak into the mic.
Oh.
Low, low.
Bring it closer to you. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Do you want me to adjourn the meeting then? I'll adjourn the meeting till November 10th, 2020, the Paramount Development Review Board.
Okay, let's call to order the Paramount Economic Development Board for October 13th. Roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Here.
Board Member Sparza?
Roll call, board member.
President. Board Member Gutierrez?
Present.
Board Vice Chair Bautista?
Present.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Here.
Approval of minutes from September 8th?
I'd like to approve the minutes for September 8th for the Paramount Economic Development Board meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Yes.
Board Member Sparza?
Dane.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Bautista?
Yes.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Any public comments tonight?
No public comments.
New business? Doesn't look like there's any reports. Looks like we have some oral reports tonight?
Yes, sir. Board Chair Weisenberger. John King will give you an update on Paramount's Climate Action Plan.
Thank you. I'm gonna unmask myself for a moment. Thank you, Board Chair Weisenberger and board members. So Paramount is working on a climate action plan. We started about, actually, I kind of forget, a few months ago, and it's carrying on through the end of this year. Official term is Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. The Public Works Department is actually spearheading this and planning. We're just kind of pitching in as we can. Just want to start off, just, so we're trying our best as a city to be more of a sustainable city, environmentally sustainable. So we have a long history of, you know, financial sustainability and other types of sustainability, and we might, you know, this is kind of a new term, but it describes some efforts that we've been doing for quite a long time, and now we're kind of packaging it together and doing our best to take us into the future. With this slide, we actually just, I think it was last week, Mayor Lemons accepted on behalf of the City of Paramount awards for what we've done for the, it's called the Beacon Spotlight Award, and the Beacon program is sponsored by the Institute for Local Government and the Statewide Energy Efficiency Collaborative, and it's funded by utilities, PG&E, San Diego Gas, Edison, Southern California Gas Company, and under the California Public Utilities Commission. So this is kind of a big deal. A lot of cities kind of compete for this, and you see there's two things that were awarded, 18% community greenhouse gas reductions, and we had got the platinum level for best practice activities, and that's across a number of different categories. You can see the icons on the bottom left that just can symbolize what we're doing, energy efficiency, water improvements, transportation, clean air. And we can always do better. That's kind of our goal. We, you know, we never just kind of end these things. We go on and we do better. Climate Action Plan, why? Why is a city doing this? You know, we're not even going to get into greenhouse gases or if the planet's warming or what it is, but, you know, the, just, we're living it. It's getting warmer. There's a lot of fires. There may be some, well, there's definitely some wildlife forest management issues, but, you know, the extra heat is the spark. Climate Action Plan, so here's some reasons why we and many other, and similar to many other cities are doing this. We're preparing Paramount. It's a plan. It's something to, you know, to look at and every year to review. The City Council will be doing that. Includes preventative and mitigation measures to address the negative results of climate change. You know, what are we gonna do? Plant more trees, have more cooling centers, for example, as folks get older and maybe they don't have air conditioning that we need to have somewhere for them to go. Shows how to adapt and improve resilience. So you hear that term a lot, adaptation, resilience. So we're, it's a very resilient community, you know, you, there's a whole history of overcoming a lot of, you know, different types of negativity through the years. You know, the city has a whole narrative about the early 1980s. We were declared a disaster city by the Rand Corporation and what we did to come out of that, and we continue to try to improve Paramount as a city, and we as a staff are proud to be a part of that, and as are the residents and other stakeholders. It's an investment to return more money back. So you put in a little bit for this plan and do a little more effort, you get a return. You get, there's a lot of state and federal grants out there that rely on a city having a climate action plan in place. So, and once you get one type of grant fund that leads to more grant funds, they kind of, they add up to each other. Improving the health of Paramount residents and others. So, you know, Paramount has, like, Los Angeles County, we're in a basin where the bad air kind of gets trapped. There's a lot of freeways where, you know, I drove a number of miles to get here today. We're all kind of a part of that. What can we do to help that out, to lower incidence of asthma and bronchial issues, COPD, and infant mortality? You know, we, this is really important for health. Go back a little bit. So Paramount is part of the Gateway Cities Council of Governments. That's the name for our region, the cities that are in basically the southeast part of Los Angeles County, and they meet right here in Paramount, so that's very interesting for us. And Gateway Cities, a couple of years ago, they took the lead on a climate action planning framework. They did this to help out all the cities within their area, the member cities, to kind of give us a head start. And here's some of the things that they came up with, some hard data, greenhouse gas inventories and forecasts, some toolkits, and some guidance. So that's what we're using, and that takes us to Boost. Boost is a state program. It stands for Build, Organize, Optimize, Strengthen, Transform. Sounds nice, you know, and City Council approved in January a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Institute for Local Government to participate in Boost. Boost is funded with cap and trade funds, state cap and trade funds, and we're one of only 10 cities in the state. We're the only one in this area, in this immediate area, in the Gateway Cities. Others include Arvin in, by Bakersfield, in the Central Valley, El Centro, a few up north, Richmond. So just to expand on that, build awareness of funding opportunities to address sustainability and climate, organize projects to be best positioned to meet its goals, optimize existing resources and build more capacity, strengthen relationships with key stakeholders, identifying new opportunities for regional engagement and collaboration, and transforming their approach to addressing climate action. So that's in a nutshell, and what do we want to get out of that? What are they giving us? Here's the goals, to identify resources to support energy-related projects, energy-related projects, so more solar panels on homes and businesses, reducing energy, how buildings are built, themselves are built, and promoting more electric vehicle charging stations. Improving, second, improving processes for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, increasing competitiveness for state funding, as we mentioned, and then showcasing sustainability efforts through promotional storytelling, which is highlighting how Paramount is striving to be a more environmentally sustainable community. So telling that story and keep going. It has a cost. Everything has a cost. $20,000 comes from Boost, from that program. We were a recipient of that. $20,000 came from a LEAP grant, and LEAP is a grant from the state Housing Department, the HCD, Housing and Community Development. There, we recently got a letter making it official, but we're allowed to go back to January to spend on this effort. And then $10,000 from the Paramount General Fund. The City Council saw that this was something very important, and to have a very direct stake in the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, they put up $10,000. And the consultant who's working on this, they're scientists, they're, it's, the firm is called Environmental Science Associates, ESA. They've done this throughout the state and their, and Pacific Northwest as well. Greenhouse gas reduction measures. So here's what they're looking at. So they're in the process of, well, they're kind of wrapping up their public engagement, and we'll get to that in a moment, but at the same time, they're looking at these possible reduction measures in these categories, energy efficiency and conservation, renewable energy, sustainable transportation. One big example is the light rail that's going to be coming. So although obviously there is energy to run, it does come from somewhere. It is, it does take less energy by and large than, you know, driving our cars as we normally do. Land use and community design, so you have a large part of that, and especially coming up, you're going to be looking at very closely at how new housing will be going around the upcoming light rail station at Paramount and Rose Grands, among other areas. Water and wastewater systems, water waste reduction and recycling, green infrastructure, parks, urban forestry and agriculture, and green business and industry. Economic benefits. So, well, we are the, this is the Economic Development Board, so why are we bringing this up here? So there is a direct connection between a climate action plan and the economy, and here they are, and this is from that cap framework, you know, we call it CAP sometimes, Climate Action Plan. Energy and water utility savings, again, grant opportunities, it all comes back to the grant funding, permit streamlining, streamlining, improved environmental quality, leading to business attraction and retention. So business does, the business community does take notice, and they're, this is, you know, kind of leading the way for these certain types of businesses that would want to come here and stay here. Increased housing choices and affordability, increased mobility, getting around, air quality benefits. We know this is one of the top issues, if not the top issue. Property value increases, so back to the dollar. So there is a very direct link between having a climate action plan, reducing greenhouse gases, and, you know, you, one example, trees, streets that have, neighborhoods that have a tree canopy, whether it's the public parkway or on private property, that have higher property values. So that's a fact there. And decrease public health costs. So if you could manage health issues, identify what they are, and get folks into good care, then in the long run, you're saving. I want to promote the, like to promote the survey. Again, this is, Public Works Department is the main department doing this, but it is important for us to be a part of it and to get the word out. They do have a survey that's up on the city website. You could put it in directly, surveymonkey.com/paramount-climate, but easiest way is, that's, there's an S you might forget there. Go to the website, paramountcity.com, scroll down below the giant photo you'll see, and on the right is a news section. Right now, it's the fourth one down. Global warming, how can we help? Take the survey here. Click on that, and then there's this little text you see on the right. There's a, there's a Spanish option too, same thing. It says, take 10 minutes to give your opinion. So it's a 10-minute survey. We have kind of got some feedback preliminarily, and folks who have taken the survey, we've kind of taken a peek at how these are coming in, and Paramount residents or other people who have taken the survey, they have shown an interest in these areas, energy efficiency and clean energy projects, increasing the safety of active transportation options, active transportation, that's, you know, biking, other types of non-cars getting around, ensuring that industry is becoming more sustainable and using more clean energy, and maintaining, that should be and, maintaining an emphasis on air quality and health. I think that's it. That's all. So if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Commissioner Bautista, I do have a question, Mr. John. So as we speak about economic development, and I hear, you know, excellent keywords about sustainability, you know, greener Paramount, more sustainable community, I wanted to promote an idea, given the fact that we are getting a little bit of funds from outside organizations. But if we look at cities like Santa Monica, where they are basically in housing, some of their bus stops with like a green canopy, you know, the city looks more attractive. It will eventually, with the new light rail system that we're going to be implementing in the city, and the ideas you have, John, of bringing a contractor to see how we can improve our downtown area, I wanted to promote that idea, and hopefully, maybe we can at least get ideas from outside cities or outside organizations, what the cost would be for our city, and I think it would actually benefit our community, seeing those that are waiting at the stop sign. Because if you know, right now, there's really no shade for anybody, none of our elders, our kids taking the bus, they're basically just sitting there with all the elements above, and maybe if we can provide a greener, more sustainable bus stop for them, I think it would be a great reflection to our community and where we're going.
Commissioner, I do want to point out that our Public Works Department, they are in the process and the design phase of updating the bus shelters, they call them bus shelters, and I believe that includes adding more coverage. But I have seen those, Santa Monica, they're kind of the smaller type and with the individual seats, I believe.
Yeah, they, the way they designed it is, obviously, we don't want to design it in such a way where it's going to become a permanent housing opportunity, but they're designed in such ways where, you know, the community, like you'd say, our youth is not like skating over them, or, or, you know, somebody goes in and, you know, puts a tent or just starts to basically live in the area. But they are very sustainable. They look, you know, great, great for the community, and they do provide that, you know, next century greener community. So I wanted to promote that idea. Hopefully, we could look into it.
Definitely pass the word on to Public Works. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. We have any comments tonight, board members?
No comments.
Okay, how about staff?
Yes, Commission Chair Weisenberger. I want to let everybody know that last week, Friday, we opened up a second round of business assistant grant, assistance grants. So we have, we have 10 grants that we can, that we can do, 10 additional grants, in addition to the 24 that we had previously budgeted for. So we've got 10 additional grants. They're $10,000 each, and they don't have to be repaid. We're accepting applications right now. There's not a deadline to submit an application. We're just going to accept applications until the funds run out. So if you know any businesses that are struggling because of COVID-19, please have them go to the city's website. It's under the news section, and they can go to an application for that. And also, we're opening up a second round for rental assistance too. And also, we're opening up a second round for rental assistance, assistance too. So we have 75 grants for rental assistance. Those are a maximum of $2,000 of each grant. So if you know anybody that's struggling to pay their rent because of COVID, please have them go to the city's website too. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, then we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene on November 10. Thank you.